Time having arrived, it's one o'clock on Monday, May 19, 2025. We are in the Mayor Bill Cappeller Executive Boardroom on the first floor of 45 Garden Road, Manning Tower, Brockton, Mass. 02301. This is a special session of the Board of Commissioners. This is also a public hearing and all are invited to attend in person or on Zoom. Also included in our agenda is the Hearing of Visitors section. Please note that all of our board meetings are recorded. This meeting has been posted at City Hall and also on our website. We are in compliance with the 24-hour notice. I am now going to call a roll for quorum. Timothy J. Sullivan, Chair, is here. Ernest Pettiford, Vice Chair, is second. Janet Artrass, member?
Here.
Darrell Roberts, Treasurer?
Here.
Taylor Harris, Assistant Treasurer?
Mr. Chairman, I just got a text from Taylor Harris, Commissioner Harris. She is with a client right now. We'll get on to the call as soon as possible.
We do have a quorum. We have three. We're only a five-member board. We have a quorum. Most of our monthly meetings are held on the last Thursday of the month, unless there is a need for a special that will be posted. Some of our members are here in person, some are on Zoom. Because of this, all of our votes will be done by roll call. You are hereby given notice that members of the Brockton Housing Authority are called to meet in a special session on Monday, May 19, 2025, at 1:00 p.m. in the Mayor Bill Cappeller Executive Boardroom, Manning Tower, 45 Garden Road, Bristol, Brockton, Mass. 02301. Going to read out the Governor's COVID notice. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic and state of emergency, on March 12, 2020, Governor Baker issued an executive order temporarily suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20. Pursuant to the law, public bodies are temporarily relieved from the Open Meeting Law's requirement that meetings be held in public places, open and physically accessible to the public, so long as measures are taken to ensure public access to the body's deliberations through adequate and alternative means. It was extended on April 1st, 2021, extended again on April 1st, 2022, extended again on July 1st, 2022, extended again July 15, 2022, extended again to March 31, 2023, by Governor Baker, and extended to March 31, 2025, by Governor Haley. Also extended to June 30, 2027, by Governor Haley. This meeting slash hearing of the Brockton Housing Authority will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and our participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting slash hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast, unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. The public is invited to view and listen to the meeting via phone, computer, laptop, or tablet. To do so, download the Zoom Cloud Meeting app in any app store or at www.zoom.us at 1:00 p.m. on May 19, 2025. Click on and join the meeting and enter ID number 851-9196-7069, passcode 256183, or use the link http://zoom.us/i/851-9196-7069. You may also join by calling the conference line at 1-646-931-3860 at 1:00 p.m. on May 19, 2025, and enter the meeting ID 851-9196-7069, passcode 256183, followed by the pound sign. The board chair will instruct participants on the appropriate time and manner for public comment during this meeting. If we could all rise, if you can, remove your headphones and sign with your cell phones for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I wish to stand under God, indivisible, with dignity, justice, and right to life. Item one, roll call.
Commissioner Trask?
Here.
And Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Chairman?
Here.
I'm on. I made it. Good.
Commissioner Harris?
Here.
Item two, selection of equity investor and lender for Campello Phase One project. Item A to package. Mr. Tebow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is a special day for the Housing Authority. We have been working since 2021 to get to this date when we went down to Plymouth and had that award. That was about the tax credits that were awarded to the Housing Authority, which is the largest portion of financing. It's not all of it, though. Total less than 50%. We have issued a request for proposals. We have what we feel were two very responsive proposals. The staff from the Cambridge Housing Authority who we have here today, I'd like to introduce them, Margaret Moran. And Margaret, I apologize if I get your title wrong, but she's a Deputy Director of, what's that? Development for the Cambridge Housing Authority. We have Maggie Wees and Emily Horgan, who are both project managers. Natalie Jansen, who is a Senior Project Manager from Cambridge. They have done a fabulous job at negotiating with the proposers to get the best terms possible. We are looking at three facets of this. One is how much equity do we get? We were posing, our performer assumed 93 cents per tax credit. One came in at 93 cents, one at 94. Through negotiations, they have come up to 96 cents. That's a substantial increase in the equity. The terms of both proposals on the equity are about the same because the term, it's the terms of the equity and they're buying the tax credits and then we also are borrowing from them. Those terms pretty much equal out the financial benefits of both proposals, which again are good. The terms, we learned quite a bit from the staff at Cambridge. One of the most important things is, and I've shared this with you individually, Mr. Chairman, at the end of the period of time, we want to take back possession of the ownership of the building. And we want to do it on terms that are good. So they've negotiated some better things there. And any of the specifics, I'll let the staff from Cambridge address. And then there's the ease of closing, the ease of the transaction. And it seemed as though one proposal was better, but not better. We were more familiar, Cambridge was more familiar with them, had done with, are involved in transactions with them right now. And we've come to the conclusion that the Richmond Group, along with Santander Bank, is the most advantageous for the Housing Authority. You have a 10-page memo there. I know it's a lot of information. I don't know, Margaret, would you like to say anything? Or just would you like to answer questions if they have questions?
You're muted, Margaret.
I'll just do a brief introduction and then turn it over to Natalie to go into a little bit more specifics. But the Cambridge Housing Authority has been doing its own development work since, and using low-income housing tax credits since 2002. We've selected 20, on 20 different projects, equity and lender partners on a project. We have a really robust process that we use that we brought with us to Brockton that includes a very comprehensive and detailed RFP that outlines kind of the terms and conditions and offer that we're making. And despite, you know, having some challenging headwinds with the financial time that we're in, as Mr. Tebow indicated, we got two very strong proposals and interest from others, but they did not end up submitting at the end of the day. And I think the team from Cambridge, working in concert with the Brockton Housing Authority team, did a very thorough evaluation and review of the proposals and negotiating, where we ended up mirroring terms that Cambridge, after having had 20 years plus experience in doing this work, has been able to negotiate for itself. And then again, very good economic terms. So I'll turn it over to Natalie Jansen to go through a little bit more detail on it. And then we'll gladly entertain any questions that you may all have.
Thank you, Margaret and Tom. I just wanted to start off too by thanking the BHA team for all of your collaboration in this process, as well as Maggie Wees and Emily Horgan for their incredible work on getting us to the point where we can make a recommendation to you on who to move forward with for the equity and debt selection for Campello Phase One. So as both Tom and Margaret mentioned, there was a lot of work putting together a request for proposals that went out to equity investors and lenders, both for those 4% low-income housing tax credits on this project. There are also state low-income housing tax credits, as well as we needed to get a construction lender on board. And so this is a process that we've gone through many times in putting together the RFP. We worked closely with the Brockton Housing Authority team, as well as outside counsel on the project, which is Steve Nolan and Hannah Kilson from Nolan Sheen-Patten. They also reviewed all of the proposals and worked with us on getting to this point. And so as was mentioned, we received three proposals. One of them was, two of them were from equity investors. So there was the Richmond Group, who is partnering with Santander Bank. That was one proposal. Then we got another proposal from the Massachusetts Housing Investment Corporation, partnering with Bank of America for the construction debt. And then we got a third proposal, which was just for construction debt from Eastern Bank. But we could not move forward with that proposal because both of the equity proposals that we got from the Richmond Group and from the Massachusetts Housing Investment Corporation required Campello Phase One to choose their investor as the construction lender. So we really just focused on, primarily on those two proposals. And as Margaret mentioned, it is worthwhile, and outside counsel also pointed this out, that the initial terms that we received were very, very favorable. They reflect the terms that the Cambridge Housing Authority gets on its projects, having, after having done this work for many decades. But we continued to always negotiate for the best possible pricing and the best possible terms. So in terms of the pricing, we were able to get an increase from, the Richmond Group had originally come in for 93 cents per low-income housing tax credits, and we were able to get that up to the 96 cents. And then for the Massachusetts Housing Investment Corporation, they started off with 94 cents and they came up a cent for 90, to 95 cents. In terms of the construction debt, all in all, when it comes out at the end of the day with the various parties' terms on the debt, the two proposals are economically comparable. But as Tom mentioned, we reviewed these proposals in, with three different factors in mind, one being the economic terms, but also what will be the ease of execution, since we do need to close on the financing for this project by the end of the year, as well as how good are the terms? So starting off with ease of execution, we worked at the Cambridge Housing Authority with all of the four different parties, before the two equity investors and the two lenders. With Richmond Group and Santander Bank, we recently closed a large project with them last year. And they were essentially the same team there, where the Richmond Group was the equity syndicator and Santander Bank was the underlying investor and also providing the construction debt term. So we feel like we're very, we're well-positioned on Campello Phase One with that team, knowing what their due diligence process is like, as well as having already negotiated heavily the documents. We've also worked with the Massachusetts Housing Investment Corporation and Bank of America, but we've never worked with them as a team where I'm gonna, I keep calling them Massachusetts Housing Investment Corporation, but their short is M-HIC. It'll just get us through this a little faster. So M-HIC is an equity syndicator. And when we worked with them, which was a long time ago, they were providing their equity investment through a fund of various different investors. We've never worked with them when they have just one investor behind them, and in this case, it's Bank of America. So we've never seen that team before. So we've had a really great working relationships with both parties, but it will be a new process moving forward. So in that sense, we felt that the Richmond Group with Santander Bank was preferable in terms of ease of execution. In terms of the terms, those were already very favorable to begin with, but we continued to negotiate to make sure that we got as many of the items that we requested in the request for proposals included in the document, the letter of intent, with the Richmond Group as the equity syndicator, as well as Bank of America. And as Tom mentioned, one of the key aspects is, after the 15-year compliance period for the low-income housing tax credits, making sure that the Brockton Housing Authority can buy the property from the investor or buy the investor's share at no cost. And in that sense, we got very good terms from both M-HIC and the Richmond Group. But we felt that in the Richmond Group's case, there's a little bit more ability to try to negotiate an even earlier exit, potentially at year 10, between year 10 and year 15. And some of the other key aspects that we looked at was making sure that the Brockton Housing Authority is accepted as the property manager, that there is no removal without cause, which is language that we were able to get from the Richmond Group, as well as to ensure that the Cambridge Housing Authority, as part of the collaboration with the Brockton Housing Authority, is, will be working to ensure that the project is well set up to meet all of the compliance requirements, but that the Brockton Housing Authority also build the capacity in-house in order to be able to continue to do this work without needing Cambridge Housing Authority assistance. And so one of the key things that we negotiated, and we are happy with the terms that we received from the Richmond Group, was making sure that at the end of the three, roughly three years after the end of construction and when the permanent loan comes in for Campello Phase One, that the Cambridge Housing Authority, as part of its affiliate, is able to exit the care and tour structure and also exit the role as the managing member of the managing member, which means essentially making Brockton Housing Authority the day-to-day decider on various aspects as part of the project and also exiting the role as asset manager. So we were very happy with the language that we could get from the Richmond Group related to that. And we've provided a breakdown on some of the other key terms. And I would be very happy, and the team would also be very happy to answer any specific questions that you may have. But our recommendation to the Brockton Housing Authority is to proceed with the Richmond Group as the equity syndicator and Santander Bank as the construction lender for Campello Phase One.
One question, Natalie?
Go ahead.
Page two and page three, is it automatic to go with them?
That's a fantastic question. No, we made sure that, that it was language in the RFP, as well as that all of the respondents understood it, that we're only selecting at this point an equity syndicator and a lender for Phase One. And the expectation is when Phase Two and Phase Three happen, that we will do the same process again. And part of that is to ensure that, that it's a competitive process where we know that we will get the best terms possible for Phase Two and Phase Three when we go out to get an equity syndicator and a lender at that point.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Janet? Haley? Darrell?
No.
Sorry, I was trying to come off mute. Can you, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Can you just repeat the, I think I missed it. What happens at the 10 to 15-year mark?
So at closing or during, I guess it'd be a little bit complicated, but essentially, the way that the structure works for a tax credit project is that you have, the property will be held by Campello Phase One LLC. And that LLC is held 0.01% by the managing member and 99.99% by the investor member, that would be the equity investor. And the way it's set up is that the managing member makes day-to-day decisions about the property and the equity investor needs to have that larger share because they're getting the tax credits that come in, that essentially is how they're providing equity to the project. And so essentially, what happens at, the tax, the tax credit have a 15-year compliance period. So after that, there is no risk associated with the tax credits. And it's typically a moment where the original sponsor, the Brockton Housing Authority in this case, would work to regain control of the property. And that can happen through different ways. There are different tools. But essentially, what we have negotiated is that there are at least three tools available to the Brockton Housing Authority, where they should be able to get the property back at no cost to the Housing Authority. And I can go into greater details, but essentially, one of the key things that we made sure was in the letter of intent is that none of these purchase prices will involve having to pay an exit tax liability. That is one of the major risks because the investor, as part of the, being a 99.99% member, they get both the tax credits as well as the negative losses coming off of the property. And so essentially, there can be a tax liability. So we always make sure that they say that there will be no exit taxes, no payment for excess taxes as part of the price. So, and then you asked both year 10 and year 15. Year 10 is when, from the low-income housing tax credit perspective, there's no actual tax credits that are being delivered to the investor anymore. That gets delivered between years one and year 10. But you're still on the hook for compliance until the end of year 15. And so sometimes, we're able to negotiate with investors an ability for the sponsor to purchase back the property or the investor member's interest at an earlier date. And that's something where we will continue to negotiate. If the Board of Directors approves the choice of the equity syndicator, then we will continue to negotiate with them to make sure that we have this option in the final documentation. And what it would likely require is that, that there would be some assurances provided to the equity investor that they are covered if there are any tax credit compliance issues between years 10 and 15.
So I'm a worst-case scenario type of person. And it sounds to me like potentially, there could be a situation where we don't regain ownership. We'd have to potentially buy back.
So...
Worst-case scenario.
Yeah, the worst case, this option is available. You have three years to purchase back the building. And I'll go through what the purchase price means because there's actually no cost associated with it. And you have two options. One is if someone puts in an offer to purchase the property, then you have the right of first refusal, meaning that the Brockton Housing Authority could go in and purchase the property. Or you have a purchase option, which doesn't require an offer to come in from a third party. You just go to the investor and say, "We've reached year 15 and we want to purchase back either your interest or the building." And the price will be set at fair market value. If fair market value assume, if it is below debt, then the Brockton Housing Authority just walks away with the debt on the property, which is what we're projecting it to be.
Okay.
But it is something that, you know, we will make sure that everyone's aware of so that when you get to the year 15 period, that it is something that you pursue and follow through with.
And I would just kind of jump in and add that, you know, oftentimes, we put a column belts and suspenders on the different ways in which, you know, the Housing Authority can get the property back in its fold after either year, year 10 or year 15, whenever it's most economically advantageous for the Housing Authority to execute that, that being. So when we do the calculations to year 15, exit looks very strong and at minimal. Natalie said no cost, but usually there's like a $10,000 or $25,000 transactional cost to do the paperwork. But there's no cost in terms of any kind of exit tax liability or actual payment out to the investor beyond the economic benefits they get. And we do, you know, we look at the year 10 because if for some reason, and this has happened to us in Cambridge, where the tax code changes and it somehow results in a greater economic benefit to the investor accruing much, at a much greater rate than what we projected, then the year 10 just gives us another way to work to make sure that the property comes back to the Brockton Housing Authority at minimal value. And one of the things that we've advised in what Brockton will have is some of their own mortgages on the property, as well as an affordable housing restriction that limits the ability for the investors to do anything unscrupulous to try to get the property away from the Brockton Housing Authority. So we've had a number of properties that, at this point, have passed through the year 15 or year 10 equation. All of them have come back to the Housing Authority at a very nominal cost. I think one property was $10,000 and another one was $25,000. And one was, yeah, even lower than that. So there is a track record that the documents and the means and methods that we've deployed have been very beneficial in terms of working to make sure the property returns back to the public Housing Authority.
But were those properties that you gained back similar in size to what we're talking about for this development?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
One other question, Natalie?
Go ahead.
I know there's no rent collected during the first, till the building is built, but who gets the rent? The investment company or the Brockton Housing Authority when it's finally done?
That's also a very good question. So essentially, all of the, the rent would come into the property and then it would pay off the operating expenses. There's also debt service on the project. And then there's something called a cash flow waterfall. And it means that the money that's remaining at the property after you paid your operating expenses and your debt essentially gets, goes to pay various aspects. And so that's also something that we negotiate and it goes to, there's a yearly fee. It's in the, it's in the memo for the equity investor of $20,000. But then there will be, a part of it will go to pay an additional management fee that goes to the managing member. There's also, you, there will be payments to the ground lease that will be held by the Brockton Housing Authority. There's payments on the Brockton Housing Authority program loan. There will also be required... There will also be required payments to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities through some of the soft debt that they're providing. And at the end of the day, what's remaining will go ninety percent to the managing member and ten percent to, to the investor member. So it will go back to the Brockton Housing Authority. And that's even though it's being held in an LLC. So that's kind of how the payments get treated once, the income gets treated at the end of the day.
And I'll just kind of give the short version of it, which is that the way the waterfall works is that nearly all of the fees, if not all of them, will come back to the Brockton Housing Authority because of, you know, the ground lease payment will absorb a lot of money. The mortgage will absorb a lot of money. I would be really surprised if in the fifteen years we ended up getting into a situation where ninety percent would come back to the Brockton Housing Authority and ten percent would go back to the investor because usually there's enough kind of things clogging, I call it, the waterfall, to prevent that distribution or extra distribution of cash to the investor member. So it really is set up to maximize the return to the Brockton Housing Authority, both in terms of the rent it collects, but then how the, if there's any cash flow that's residual after you pay, after the Brockton Housing Authority pays its bills, that it would come back to the Brockton Housing Authority.
Is the Richmond Group a national entity?
Yeah, they syndicate throughout the country.
One final question, Margaret. The Brockton Housing Authority would maintain that building and keep the maintenance there?
So yeah, that's, that was a critical element of negotiation is to make certain that the Brockton Housing Authority could manage and maintain the property during the period of the tax credit compliance period. And so we've done that. But we do need, because of the extra hurdles of the tax credit compliance period, there's a period of time that the CHA will be assisting the Brockton Housing Authority during, during the construction period and the lease-up and the first year, three years of operation because the investor and the lender want to make sure that the property's generating the income that we all projected, but also experiencing the expenses that we're all projecting. And so for the investor and lender to agree to participate, having Cambridge in the, in the deal through that first three years of the, what's called the operating deficit guarantee period, was, was critical. But then after that period, Cambridge steps away. Brockton would be the managing member of all of the entities. But the day-to-day operations, absolutely the Brockton Housing Authority with, you know, some support as needed from the CHA. And again, mostly, you know, for training and capacity as you take on the new responsibilities of managing a tax credit funded project and managed project.
Has anything changed over the past year with the change in administration? I mean, has that made anything crazier in this whole process or not really?
I mean, we've had, we were concerned when we went out with our request for proposals, you know, kind of what the interest is because there's a lot of uncertainty in the market. And, and so people are expecting a tax cut. And when tax cuts happen, that usually means that the value that you can get for a tax credit, from a tax credit investor goes down. And then the also thing, you know, we mentioned that the bank is involved, the Santana Bank. Their motivation is not only the tax credit, but also the Community Reinvestment Act requirements that they need to meet. And there's also been some talk about the current administration changing those rules. But we've gotten assurances from the Santana Bank that despite, you know, could there be any changes to the, in the near term? Or, you know, between now and when we close later this year. They have the full ability to move forward under the terms and conditions that they've arranged for us because that was one of the things that we really needed to assess is their ability to proceed and move forward in times of uncertainty, which is kind of where we are right now. But we got those assurances really both from the Bank of America and from Santana and the Richmond Group. So, you know, we feel very confident and comfortable that we've done as much due diligence as we possibly can to handle the uncertainties of the time, given the change in administration.
Question, the tax credit, is this just for Phase One?
Yes, this, this recommendation and this financial package is all specific to Phase One. And so we would come back on the subsequent phases with future recommendations.
And it could change under Phase Two?
Correct, yep, yes.
One other question, Margaret. If, and, 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 would they send a group out during construction?
To monitor the quality of the work in the, yeah. Yeah, they'll send out a monthly construction inspector, who will be their eyes on the ground, looking at the completion of the project. Mass Housing will do the same as well, just because they want to make sure that the, the work is progressing well and that they're not, when, when we go in to ask for reimbursement on expenses that they've seen that the work is at a level of completion to warrant the request for expenditures. So, yep, they, they will both be visiting and we'll be interacting with them on a fairly frequent basis.
Would they set up a trailer down there or something?
The Santana Bank won't, but the contractor will. And the contractor will have meeting space usually in that trailer that the, that's the Santana and Mass Housing folks would utilize when they're on site.
Any other questions? Taylor, anything?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
Janet? Carol? We need a motion on item one. Does everybody have it?
That's a very, it's the last thing on the memo. Begins with consideration of request.
So we just need a motion and a second from somebody and I'll read off the motion.
Okay, so move.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Carol Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Taylor Harris. Motion is consideration of request by the executive director, subject to successful conclusion of final negotiations to select Richmond Group as the equity investor and Santana Bank as the construction lender for the redevelopment of Campello Apartments Phase One and authorize the executive director or his designate to execute a letter of intent, debt term sheet, and any other documents necessary as the executive director shall determine to effectuate entering into this agreement with the construction lender and the equity investor. Any questions or discussion on the motion? During the roll call?
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Trask?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously.
Congratulations, we have another huge step forward. I can breathe for a minute and then we'll go back into, we'll be meeting tomorrow on how we move forward. I want to thank the board. This is a very complicated deal, something that we've been working on for years. I want to thank the, the staff and the people from Cambridge, the wonderful work you've done, and also the staff here at Brockton, working around. So another, another big step forward for the residents of the Brockton Housing Authority.
One more item on the agenda. We need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Carol Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Taylor Harris. Don't leave yet, Taylor. We'll call him.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Trask?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Need a good room.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations, thank you.